There was no action taken in closed session. And if everyone could rise for the flag salute, please. You gonna do the board meeting protocol?
No, I think first we have some presentations. We have a couple of presentations and we will start with Lake Canyon Elementary students. Mrs. Hayes and we have some special students here tonight.
I think there's some issue with the the podium one doesn't work. Sorry. Make sure it's on. Is it on? There we go.
Um, so my name is Sophia and I'm a fifth grader. And one of the things I like and well, some of the things I like about um Gate is that we're doing all these fun activities about things we like. And sometimes like doing that college pennant that we made of a college that we might want to go to and some careers we might want to learn about there. Is that we can think about our future in school and jobs we might want to do.
Sophia, do you want to show me your pennant?
So this is my pennant. I did Yale and I searched up some of the things that I teach there. And I might want to become like an author or a scientist. It's one of my jobs.
Very good. That's if you could stand up on the ledge.
Hello, I'm Ava and um Gate has inspired me to think about my future. It it has inspired me because now I know that I could do as many jobs as I want. I could I could become a contortionist. I could become an actor. I could become a singer. I could do pretty much whatever I want. And here's my college pennant. I am looking forward to the um going to NYU, New York, New York University to becoming an actress slash model.
My name's Miles. I'm in fourth grade and the way Gate hasn't had, oh dang. The way, so the way Gate is different from the activities that I do in my classroom is that the class is a lot smaller, but the activities are much more interesting and fun than the ones I do in the classroom.
Hello, my name is Avery and I'm in fifth grade. Well, I've been what I'm looking forward to in the Gate program are the STEM projects. For example, the deserted island and the snowball launcher. This, this is my college pennant to Sonoma University.
So we just wanted to thank you guys, just kind of give you a little introduction of what we're up to. If you're ever curious to stop by, we'd be more than happy to show you kind of what we're going on and doing around there. So thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
What was that? Oh, Miles, he already took his pennant home.
Yeah, what school? I'm going to the Sacramento State Hornets.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Mrs. Chegarelli, and thank you, students, for coming out. Great job. Glad you're excited about your projects and good luck with your future aspirations of those colleges and talents and modeling and acting and all the above. And thank you, parents, for bringing them out tonight. Right, we have one last presentation. We have Lisa Klotz from Cal Waste.
Since it doesn't work and I speak very loudly, I'll just go for it right here. I'm Lisa Klotz. I'm the Education Coordinator for Cal Waste Recovery Systems. And last night at the city council meeting of the district, the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District was given an environmental award. And I want to read it to you, please. "In a time when caring for the environment is more crucial than ever, Galt Joint Union Elementary School District's dedication to handling waste responsibly sets a great example. Your commitment to being environmentally responsible is truly commendable and sets a high standard in our community. Congratulations to Galt Joint Union Elementary School District for your tireless efforts in recycling and sustainability." And when this award was given last night, I just didn't feel that the proper recognition was given. And so I asked Superintendent Yont if we could give some individual awards. And I wanted to award each school because you have all made just a fabulous effort in growing the next generation of environmental citizens. And so I have some certificates for you to take back to your school. And it would be really great if you would come up and accept them, please. And the first one is for Vernon E. Greer Elementary School. I know who you are, so get up. So I want to thank you in particular. And I do recall all those food waste realings we did with those first through third graders. And managing things now. And the next one is for Lake Canyon Elementary. And so and I want to thank you in particular. If you look very closely in most of our recycle education videos that we use throughout the elementary school district and actually many different school districts, you will recognize Lake Canyon. And there, they've orchestrated not allow us to film on the campus. Valley Oaks Elementary School? Okay, so I have the award because your second grade teachers call me the first thing to come and talk to them. So first down the list there. River Oaks Elementary School? I want to give your school special recognition because your fourth grade teachers never fail to give me feedback on what we're doing. Help keep our, our programs that we're presenting to classes fresh and, and current and appropriate for the grade level and Morango Ranch Elementary School? Okay, so Morango, I tell you, you know, not only is that my children's alma mater, both of them, but those are the craziest second graders I've heard. And the second grade teachers go, teaching, don't worry about it. They're learning, they're learning. And they promise to take message home. So that's really important. Um, we have one too for McCaffrey Middle School. We will not forget you. Thank you, please, for allowing us to come on KDA, about a student of mine that we partner with. But also because when you allowed us to come and do the food waste assembly to remind your middle schoolers that food waste is very important. And those seventh graders went, oh, we know how to do this. We already done this before, which means all of you have been doing a good job teaching them. So thank you very much. And last but not least, we have one for Fair Sight. Learning Center, come on now. Wait, oh, oh, no, no.
Laura Marquez is not here. Colchi, go ahead. You want to do it? There we go.
Um, we don't, we were happy to do a program at any grade level, but they call and say, can you bring those blue recycling carts out so that our little kiddos can turn short in the proper container that they have at home? The cart at home. And so I just really want to thank you all for really being committed to, to that next generation of environmental I need to get a picture.
And while you do that, Lisa, thank you. We couldn't do this without your support. You've been so great educating our students and our staff. And thank, thank you, Nick Swoloda, our food and nutrition supervisor. He leads his staff in the kitchen and all of that to get this going. And really, it takes our yard supervisors, our custodians are a big part of getting this done. Takes a lot of work and training to do the food recycling. So thank you, everyone.
That brings us to public comments for topics not on the agenda, which we do have tonight. And I'll just call them up. Okay.
I think they're in order there.
I'm going to go in order that they were received. So Matthew Ward.
Good evening, board members. My name is Matthew Ward. I'm a longtime Galt resident and father to three boys at Lake Canyon Elementary School. I've been a regular volunteer at Lake Canyon since 2021 and currently volunteer Monday through Friday, teaching math to small groups of kids at no cost to the district. Friday night, I attended a fundraiser at Lake Canyon Elementary School and was disgusted, disturbed, and outraged to find a tampon dispenser installed on the wall of the boys' bathroom. Obviously, these dispensers are being installed in the boys' bathrooms to accommodate individuals that are not boys at all, but are actually, in fact, girls that are identifying as boys. At this point, why even call the bathroom a boys' bathroom at all? By placing a tampon dispenser in the boys' bathroom, you aren't just blurring the distinction between boys and girls. You are eliminating the distinction. Can this board give me a definition of the word boy? The sign on the door says boys. So what does boy actually mean? My definition of a boy is a juvenile human male. And the last time I checked, males don't have menstrual bleeding. Females do. I've often told people that I think that one of the most important books ever written is the book If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. You give a mouse a cookie, he will ask for a glass of milk. If you give him the milk, he'll ask for a straw, then a napkin, et cetera. What's going on here is the story of the book. If you tell a girl that she can become a boy, she just might believe you. If she decides that she is now a boy, you will be required to call her by her new pronoun. Once you refer to her by her new pronoun, she's going to want to use the boys' bathroom. She gets to use the boys' bathroom, she will be, she will expect to have a tampon dispenser in the bathroom to absorb her monthly menstrual bleeding. And it's just going to get crazier from here. What is the board prepared to do if a kid decides to identify as a cat and expects that a kitty litter box be placed in the bathroom to accommodate their needs? Worse yet, what is the high school district prepared to do to address males that are pretending to be females and expect to use the same bathrooms and showering facilities as the women? Tampon dispensers in the boys' bathrooms is only the beginning, not the end. I am not okay with my boys having to share their bathroom with females. Likewise, if I had girls, I would be beyond outraged to know that my girls were being forced to share a bathroom with males. I am asking for the following. Number one, that the board adopt a resolution to remove the menstrual product dispensers that were installed in the boys' bathrooms. Two, that the board make this an agenda item to be voted on at the next board meeting. In short, installing tampon dispensers in the boys' bathrooms sends a damaging message to our young children that compromises, confuses, and outright contradicts basic human biology and common sense. School is supposed to be a house of learning, not confusion. Call me crazy, but I think that any kid in need of a tampon should either bring their own or go into their girl's bathroom to get one, not the boys' bathroom. The board cannot find it reasonable to have these dispensers removed from the boys' bathroom. I will be withdrawing my volunteer service from the district, removing my boys from Lake Canyon, and encouraging others to do the same. Much more could be said, but I will leave it at that for another time. Thank you very much for your attention to this matter. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Ward?
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. Recently, it was brought to my attention that a menstrual product dispenser was in the boys' bathroom at Lake Canyon Elementary. I went to see for myself that indeed in the boys' bathroom at an elementary school, a menstrual product dispenser is in place. This is per California Education Code 35292.6. Within this code, it states that menstrual product dispensers must be placed in women's restrooms, all gender or unisex restrooms, and at least one men's restroom. Having menstrual products in the boys' room disturbed me greatly. The presence of these dispensers is unnecessary for many reasons and can create confusion among students. Not only this, it sets a dangerous precedent. I want for a second for everyone to understand what this education code is indicating. It indicates, indicates that a girl or a transgender boy is allowed in the boys' restroom. And along these lines, we must interpret that then a girl or transgender boy is allowed in the boys' locker room. And then with this, it also means that a boy that identifies as a transgender girl is therefore allowed in the girls' restroom and girls' locker room. See where this goes. With no distinction, how can it be comfortable and safe space for all? I see this as not creating an environment that respects everyone's needs and comfort levels. At this point, with a boys' restroom sign on the door and a female menstrual products inside, the boys' bathroom sign should be removed and a unisex sign should be placed. However, I personally do not wish my boys to be in the boys' room with a girl or transgender boy without me present. And this goes for any child, female. I would like to be at the door or present. And likewise, a girl should not have to be in, share a restroom space with a boy or man or a transgender girl or woman. If menstrual products are indeed the true concern, any pupil can go to the office to receive these items for free, which is great. And they're available in the girls' restroom, which is great. As well, most girls and women bring their own products that they are familiar with. I would really like to be focusing my energy on other matters. However, I want to make sure this space is safe and appropriate and comfortable for my children and other children and doesn't create unnecessary confusion. I'd like to see this school board make the topic of female sanitation dispensers in the boys' room an agenda item at the next meeting in order for this topic to be discussed more. I'd like to see the board choose to be noncompliant with the, this education code and have the dispensers room moved from the boys' restroom throughout the district. I know you all are volunteers and I really do appreciate your time and allowing me to speak. And I just, I feel like this can be tackled appropriately and decently in a polite, kind way without creating confusion or potential problems in the future, especially at the high school level and onward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Veronica Kaufman?
Oh, thank you so much. Um, good evening. It's been brought to my attention that all menstruation products have been removed from all bathrooms to Lake Canyon Elementary School site. I am here to publicly and on the record request that the Galt Elementary School Board comply with California Education Code 35292.6, otherwise known as the Menstruation Equity Act for, I'm sorry, the Menstruation Equity for All Act, which requires all public schools, and I quote, "Maintain any combination of classes from grades six to twelve inclusive, shall sock the school's restrooms at all times with an adequate supply of menstrual products, available and accessible, free of cost, in all women's restrooms and all gender restrooms and at least one men's restroom." I understand there may be some community opposition to this. So for reference, CaliforniaHealthyEducation.org has a wonderful handbook outlining the reasons that this act is necessary. One snippet includes background related to poverty. In California, one in six women live below the federal poverty line. In 2021, a study found that 65% of students surveyed did not want to be at school while on their period. And that 83% of students surveyed reported hiding their menstrual products when leaving the class to go to the restroom. Another study showed that 86% of adults who menstruate have started their period unexpectedly in a public without the supplies that they need. 79% reported needing to improvise tampons or pads out of toilet paper or other materials because no menstrual products were available. And 34% had to go home immediately to get menstrual products. Such disruption costs considerate time and resources, which can be particularly burdensome for young people who are low income or unhoused. Lack of access to menstrual products can risk physical and emotional health and disproportionately impact women and girls, transgender men and boys, and non-binary people. Access to menstrual products is a necessity, not a luxury, and we should be guaranteed for the health, safety, and dignity of all Californians. Furthermore, I requested trash receptacles be moved back inside the restrooms. At Lake Canyon, they're not in the bathrooms. They're outside. And I cannot imagine being a 10 to 13 year old student who needs to change a menstrual product and then has to take that used product outside the restroom in order to properly dispose of it. So in closing, I'm asking the board to reassure any parents or guardians that may have concerns and that the district follow Ed. Code 35292.6 and restore the menstrual products to all school restrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Sanders?
Good evening. It's I have a 10 year old and a seven year old, both attend Lake Canyon Elementary. And it's recently come to my attention that during the last school year, tampon dispensers were installed in the boys' restrooms at my children's elementary school. I believe this serves only to check a box off a woke idealistic checklist and does nothing but further confuse the youth of our community. I moved that the board add removal of tampon dispensers from boys' restrooms to the agenda for the next board meeting. This world is full of many confusing things, and I myself have trouble understanding some of them. At some point, our children will be fully aware of all sorts of things. But I think I can speak for most parents when I say that I'd like my children to enjoy their innocence as long as possible and really don't think that there is a place for catering to woke ideals in our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Travis Sanders?
Good evening, members of the board and everyone else here. A little nervous this is the first time I've attended one of your meetings or even watched any of them on TV or anything like that. So forgive me for if I stutter. But I've lived in Galt for 30 years. I moved here in 1990 with my family. I was seven. I made it as far as El Grove for about three years, but I came back. I came back to Galt because it's a small town, small town morals, and people who are truly involved with this town and what it used to represent. It was a small agricultural, agricultural town based on with good football teams, good baseball teams, kind of a picturesque movie town. But lately, I think this town is kind of losing its way. And one of those things is attending a event at Lake Canyon Elementary School the other day, I, as well as some of the others here, noticed that they had a feminine product dispenser in the boys' restroom. As has been previously stated. Um, I agree with accepting people for who they are and what they are. However, we can't please everyone. When we start to do that, then we start to please no one. If we continue this line to be fully accepting of everyone, then everything's going to be blurred, right? As has been stated before, there will be boys pretending to be girls in locker rooms and such, right? We don't need to get into that down the road, but by having these in the restrooms with our small children, I have a 10 year old son and a seven year old daughter that go to that school. All it's going to do is create confusion and it's going to create questions regarding, you know, why they're in boys' bathrooms and what they're for, which is what parents are for. That's our job is to educate our children on these things. It's not the school's job to force them down their throat. Sorry, nervous. If we want to include or have this opportunity for everyone to be accessible, have all of these items accessible. or have this opportunity for everyone to be accessible, have all of these items accessible. And as is stated previously in the code, that uh, they should be in a men's restroom. All of these are in clearly marked boys restrooms. They're not fully developed adults yet. If we want to get into the whole soft brain twenty-four years old thing, that's a whole different road, right? But they're boys, they're girls, they're still growing, they're still learning, and it's our jobs as parents and it's your job as the board to make sure that they follow a path in their education that is not just uh, educationally sound, but also morally sound. They go to school for social activities as well. And when we create a, a, a place that is not healthy for them to be, then their learning is going to suffer and then the health is going to suffer. As it was stated in the code, it needs to be in a men's restroom, then maybe we could put it in an adult restroom in the office where somebody who is educated and developed and has the opportunity to make those decisions for themselves on what they want to be and what they want to use has access to it as well as was already stated before in the office, at a nurse's station, or in the female restrooms. Uh, this may seem like a small issue to some, but it could be, could create larger issues down the road. And small wins can lead to larger victories. So I ask you to please uh, remove these, these items from the boys bathrooms throughout the entire school district. And uh, to vote on it, please at your, at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
No, there are no further public comments.
Thank you.
That brings us.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right. Thank you. I will go over the board meeting protocol. Our meeting is being recorded. It's open to the public and it's broadcast live through Zoom. Public comments are three minutes per agenda item. The board shall limit the time for public comments um, for each agenda item of twenty minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment to make public comment in person. There are public comment cards over there that would go to Ms. Bach, our board meeting assistant. And you can also email public comments to the superintendent twenty-four hours before the board meeting and they'll be posted on our website with the agenda. We do have two um, comments that were emailed to us and they are posted on our, with our agenda on the website. Board vote and connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. Should a board member attend the meeting remotely or lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes and regular board meetings shall be adjourned by ten thirty.
Thank you, Lois. That brings us to the reports.
All right, we will start with our LCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan. It's our annual update. This is an opportunity for us to share with the board our progress and meeting our goals and our actions and also update any expenditures to date. And so Kuljeet Nijjar, our Director of Educational Services, has been working on this and will present where we're at at this time in the school year.
All right. Thank you, Lois. So you do have a copy of the template in your board packet. And as Lois mentioned, this is our mid-year report and school districts are required to update the board on their uh, mid-year progress by February twenty-eighth. Um, we are in the third year of this three-year cycle and we will be developing a new LCAP for board, board consideration and approval in June. So in terms of our goals, our first goal is engaging learners in pre-K through, um, through a pre-K through eighth grade through a focus on equity, access, academic rigor with inclusive practices in various learning environments. And to meet this goal, the metrics or the data points that we're looking at are around enrollment in our pre-K TK programs with a focus on increasing our EL enrollments. Our dual-language immersion program, looking at the academic progress, meeting district benchmarks, services provided through our school readiness to families from, uh, with children from zero to five. The, the metrics for this goal also look at academic uh, progress. We look at DRA data, MAP data, Sback data, looking to see how many of our students uh, with disabilities are taking the uh, Sback, looking at the progress that our English language learners are making towards proficiency, reclassification dates, uh, sorry, reclassification data, and making sure that we are teaching our students with Common Core State Standards-Aligned Curriculum in Math, ELA, and uh, science. In addition, we looked at how many unduplicated students were attending summer. So the structure of the template is on the right-hand side under, so you have your goals and then you have your metrics, the, the data sets that we will be looking to see if we're meeting the goal. And so we have the mid-year outcome data that's in that um, kind of salmon color column. So you can see there are some data sets that have been put in, but then there are some that we're still waiting for. So for example, all of our winter assessments that will be happening end of January, beginning of February will be reported out at the annual update. So that was the first goal. So in addition to identifying the data that we will be measuring to determine if we've made progress on this goal, we also have action items. What are we going to put into place to make sure that we meet these goals? And these are shared out starting on page eleven. And again, this is for goal number one. And so what you have is each action item and on the right-hand side, the blue column is what we had budgeted for that item. And then the salmon colored column on the right-hand side is what we have spent so far. So for example, for our pre-kindergarten program, um, you know, we're looking at enrollment from zero to five. This includes our preschool students, our TK students, and also our families that are accessing, accessing our playgroup and our home visiting. Um, let's see. We identify specialized, certified support, and this would be in supporting our new teachers that are requiring mentors, administrative support to make sure that we have the appropriate staffing to be able to analyze data and provide interventions and support for our struggling students. Um, after-schools, uh, acceleration blocks and summer programs is another action item. Instructional assistance that we've put into place. Um, IAs to support mainstreaming, the uh, ongoing professional development that we provided to our dual-language immersion programs. The dates have been identified there for the year-long support. Our, our, our sites providing academic conferences. There's literacy instruction intervention that is being provided through our teachers on special assignment. And then um, the professional development that is being offered throughout the school year to uh, continue to strengthen instructional practices and dive deep into our curriculum. So that's the first goal. And those were just some areas that I highlighted. The second goal focuses on the whole learner development through social and emotional learning opportunities in a variety of safe and supportive environments. And here we're looking at our average daily attendance, our chronic absenteeism rate, our suspension rates, our expulsion rates, and then our um, school connectedness. And this is measured through our surveys that we do and in the, in the next month or so. And these surveys are completed by staff, parents, and students. And as you can see, the, the data for those is, is not available yet. And so as soon as that information is available, we'll be able to provide that annual update. Okay? So action items to support these goals are around providing administrative support. So we have assistant principals supporting um, at all campuses and they, you know, they do share campuses for the elementary. And at the middle school, we have one full-time assistant principal and one part-time. We have counseling and social work services and supports at every school campus, and that doesn't include the um, the Sacramento County Health, Sacramento County Office of Education's mental health therapists that have been provided as well. We offer expanded and enrichment opportunities throughout the school day and then uh, then with our GEL program, our expanded learning program in the afternoon. Our sites have implemented multi-tiered systems of support, and these are structures and frameworks so that we can provide um, interventions and supports that's for students that are struggling academically, socially, and behaviorally. And again, our TOSA's support, providing that individualized attention. And then the last area is around facilities maintenance and our FIT reports. So each of these action items helps to address the metrics that aim for the goals that we've identified for this uh, LCAP cycle. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you, Kuljeet. Our Gifted and Talented Education Gate Program Update, which was a good night for that.
I think, um, President Skinner, I think we have the math curriculum pilot and adoption update first.
Jumped ahead.
That's okay. We'll turn that over to our Director of Curriculum, Cleo DeToro-Anguiano.
Thank you so much. So we have begun the process of a new math adoption and we are incredibly fortunate to have um, a partnership with SCOE. Um, the math, uh, one of the, well, the math director for the county is with us today, Mr. Dave Chans. So I'm going to ask him to come up. He is guiding us, supporting us, helping us with this process, and he will provide us with an update of where we've been, where we're at, and where we're going. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share. Am I loud enough? Usually I get accused of being too loud. So um, I just wanted to provide a bit of an update on where we're, what we've done, where we're at, and what the process is. And if we could advance the slides, they're also in your packet, but uh, uh, really review the process. What, what is a math adoption process? What process are we going through? Uh, talk about the committee and their current work and uh, and next step. So the, this graphic illustrates the process. The highlighted box indicates where we're at now. Uh, we've engaged a team of teachers and I really have to commend your teachers because they have rolled up their sleeves, they have gotten to work, they, they have really engaged in this work in terms of how do we really understand and, and get on the same page on one, what, what is the math? Okay, what's both the content standards and the practice standards? And uh, and then identifying needs of students right here in Galt Elementary. What are the needs of our kids? Okay, because you have a diverse student population, how do we identify that? And then begin to review some tools and resources to then move to the next box, which is narrowing down the options for math programs to four and then to two. And those two programs would then be piloted uh, target next fall with uh, then a consensus building process to bring forward to, to you a recommendation on what the committee of teachers believes is the best program to meet the needs of your kids. So that's the process. The next piece that I, I wanted to highlight was what, what have teachers engaged in so far? So if we move to the next slide, it's really a focus on the math standards, right? Uh, really understanding what should kids be learning at each grade level, okay? That being one of the areas to focus on as they look through math materials to really determine is the math provided here going to support both our kids and our teachers? The resources are listed and highlighted there that uh, your teachers have gone through. I would encourage you, if you would like to dig into those, those are linked within the slide decks and we can move on to the next one. Uh, next steps would be to generate a list of programs for review. Okay, and that's one of the calls to action that, that we'll talk about in just a moment, but uh, I, teachers met yesterday. Uh, we, we said, there was a survey sent out last week asking for input. I believe input is super important. I believe that programs that people believe teachers, educators, the community believe should be looked at, should be looked at by the committee. Right? And then using a process, be able to filter that down to determine what's going to best meet the needs of our kids here in Galt. Uh, in February through April, the committee will go through the review process, looking at materials based on various lenses narrowing that number down to a manageable pilot size, right? Piloting two programs is a lot, right? So hopefully being able to achieve that number and then again, bringing forward a recommendation to you in spring of twenty twenty-five. Looking ahead to the next slide, uh, call to action would be, do you have any programs that you feel like should be on the table for review? Okay, because we want to be able to generate this list by the end of January to be able to contact publishers, to be able to have those resources for the committee of teachers to be able to look at. So if you have any, I would encourage you to, to voice that, to share that. Uh, I'm sure each of you did see the email in regards to asking for input. Uh, we want to generate that list so that teachers can review that. And again, I, I do want to again mention that, that your teachers have done a fantastic job, okay? And I value the, the, both the, the desire, the work effort to, to really support kids in this process. Any questions?
Thank you for your explaining the process and then just um, helping and like you said, having the teacher's support and obviously they're the ones to know what is needed and what will work in the classroom. Probably more so than even us when it comes to math.
Excellent.
Yeah, I was really pleased to see how many of our teachers were on there because I think they know the students most, they know the community the most. And so um, it's nice to have that local eyes on it, you know, with regards to what could be implemented here. So, and thank you for your support as well.
Certainly. I, I did want to mention there is a link to that committee of teachers. And as you mentioned, there's a large number of teachers that, that are a part of it and a diverse group from most grade levels, right? And, and a variety of expertise.
I would like to add that, um, of course, I completely agree. It's so important to have teachers from all schools, almost all grade levels. But equally important is to have a facilitator that can really provide us with the correct lens to look through as we look at various materials. A group of us can come together and, and we can do our best, but it with Dave's um, guidance, it really has given us enough information, a refresher on standards and what does it mean and, and what is, you know, what do fractions look like? Starting in kinder, because really that process starts early on. What's it look like moving beyond eighth grade? So I think having all that knowledge fresh in our brain, having some deep discussions with Dave. He poses excellent questions that really forces us to think about, okay, when we look through materials, we need to make sure that we ensure that the following are included in that program. So not enough to say this is a program that a, a different district is using and teachers really like it. It's really about Dave providing us with the knowledge to be able to say, okay, this meets our needs. This is best for our students. So I, I thank you again for your time and, and for all the teachers involved in the, in the pilot, they come after school. So as tired as they are, they still come and we still read and we discuss and um, it's been a, a really powerful process and um, we've learned a lot, Dave, and we're excited to learn more. So that's an update. We'll come back um, with more information uh, later, maybe this year, certainly at the beginning of next year, and, and we'll keep you posted on the progress.
Thank you very much, Dave, for your support.
Thank you.
I want to get to hear about our Gifted and Talented Education Program Update.
Yes, so with us, we have Laura Papino, who will share with us a gate update. Uh, Laura, I can't remember, when were you here last, when you kind of launched it and?
I believe it was April.
It was, right?
April or May of last school year. So it's, it's been a while and we, I'm, I'm excited to share what we have. Um, it was nice that I was presenting this month when Lake Canyon. It was nice that I was presenting this month when Lake Canyon presented theirs and what they've done and they they shared some very specific things. As you've seen, what's in your agenda, what I have is more broad and generic to, to just get through it. So thank you. So we continue to expand our great program strategically. The goal is to design a gate program that meets the unique needs of the students who demonstrate exceptional abilities and talents. Various activities and supports are taking place at each school. It's been neat. I'm off topic for just a second, but it's been neat to, to see the TOSAs come together and really start talking and collaborating, how to make this work best for all of our students. So already in place, all of the TOSAs are meeting with students weekly, thirty to forty minutes. As time allows, they will expand that. And they're all very busy in addition to working with our gate students, but with their intervention groups. So we're, we're still tweaking as we go. All sites have completed the interest surveys and those have been really fun to discuss with the TOSAs. So based on the survey results, this two sites, as I say in here, did a STEM project. Another one site focused on art and poetry. One site did an autobiography and goal setting, which you've heard this evening. And one site focused on learning about their personal learning styles. And that was also really fun for the kids and very eye opening for staff. Testing updates, we're going to test earlier this year than we have in the past. I have two weeks that I'll be trying to collaborate with the TOSAs and the third grade teachers at each site to get the testing done. And the, giving the test is not difficult. It'll be easy for us to get through it quickly and efficiently. Again, especially as now this will be my third year facilitating that process. In progress. So as you heard tonight, Smed will be coming out to Lake Canyon. The district is providing a bus to all the sites so that all of our gate students can come together for the first time. And be a part of this solar radiation presentation. We're still finalizing the date. And Stina has offered her classroom for everyone to, to do it with. The second trimester, all sites are working on STEM activities and projects. And when I'm on my campuses and I have the opportunity to pop in to watch the, the kids engage with what they're doing, they're having so much fun and it's really fun to see. I need to make an effort to get to the other three sites so I can just take a peek at them too. Third trimester activities are still in development. They do plan to do some sort of field learning experience possibly to the preserve or another museum. And if not, going to a museum, some sort of virtual experience like that. And in our January takeaway Tuesday, which is next week, includes a session on supporting gate students in their homeroom or their, their general ed classroom. And Heather Wetzel, who is the TOSA at Marengo Ranch, will be providing that training on Tuesday. So that's great. Our goals for this year were to get the program started and we continue to develop the program with the TOSAs, enriching the gate students engagement, providing SEL support. And that is something that I've discussed with the TOSAs and I think I may have presented last spring. There are SEL considerations for our gate students. And so we do need to be cognizant of that and supportive of that as we work with them. And the students have a lot of voice and choice in what they're doing. And so they have been playing a key role in the specifics of their activities. And so after testing is done, we will invite our third grade students to join us for third trimester activities to kind of get to know the other gate students in their school site and get a taste of what's to come for them next year. This year, when the notifications go out to families who students qualify, or qualify for gate, in addition to just the report, I will come up with a, a pretty broad explanation and definition for the families of what they can expect that the gate program will provide for their students. So that's a new piece that we're adding for next year. And then so goals for next year, to further expand the number of students being supported, we will at next year have fourth through sixth grade students. And so I will be aware for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year that come the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We will need to engage with McCaffrey to support those seventh grade students. We will offer support and enrichment at the beginning of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This year, we started a little bit later as the TOSAs were getting acclimated to their intervention groups. Now that we know a little bit more about how this is going to look, we can start earlier. And I will continue to support the TOSAs and coordinate through at least once a trimester collaboration meetings to share ideas and best practices. They meet aside from me and that's great. And I hear back from them what they've been working on. So they will continue to collaborate with each other, collaborating on units, activities and supporting each other. They'll continue to support the classroom teachers with items related to differentiation, acceleration, flexible grouping and increasing an understanding of gifted education best practices. And Heather is going to be starting that for us next week. So that's exciting. We are going to look at developing multiple curricula criteria, sorry, for identification beyond the N nat three that we have been using the last few years. And then we will work with developing local partnerships with businesses and colleges. And we already have a little bit of that. I'd like to see it expand as quickly as we can. And so last slide, I have just three different pictures from three of the different sites. I talked to the TOSAs and a couple of them sent me some pictures. And so the gate leaders will continue to work together to create challenging and exciting opportunities for our gate students to grow academically, socially and emotionally. And it's, it's been really fun to check in with the TOSAs as to how they're making this work for them this year. So, any questions?
Thank you. I, I love hearing that they're going to all come from all the campuses together, especially moving forward to McCaffrey. They're all going to be meeting each other and working together there. So that's
Yeah.
To hear.
Yeah, that, that'll be exciting for them.
Yeah. Did you say that there's one program on each elementary school campus right now?
Yes.
They each have their own?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papino.
Thank you so much, Laura.
Lap, lap goal number two. Food and nutrition services.
I'll have, yeah. I'll, I'll have Nick, our supervisors for food nutrition services, present this update for our, our department. Thank you, Nick.
Good evening, everybody. Hey, this is, I like this. You're going to shake my hand? There we go, no? Okay. Oh, here, here, Colgy. Okay, come on, Colgy. There we go. There you go. This is uncomfortable. Thank you. So good, good evening, everybody. I have a presentation, you know, usually we do a yearly presentation for food nutrition. For, for the board. Just want to highlight before I do anything on the board or on the presentation is that everything that's in here that I get to talk about and I get to brag about or I get to to present to you is only possible because we have a solid staff of child nutrition professionals that show up every day at six o'clock, leave at three thirty, three, two thirty, come in, receive deliveries from all over the place, cook, make it happen, greet the kids with a smile, help solve problems that they've had getting off the bus, tie shoes. Just tell them that they have a cute bow or they like their Power Rangers shirt or whatever it is. That all that here in this is, is because of them, their hard work. And we have about twenty-five to thirty part-time, full-time and substitute. And really without them, the schools would have a bad day. So if there's no breakfast, no lunch, that's just gonna not be set for a good learning environment. So because of them, that's why we're here. So again, I'm Nick Swoboda, food service supervisor for the elementary school district. Uh, first page, we have multiple programs. We live in acronyms, you know, NSVP, NSLP, so National School Breakfast Program, National School Lunch Program, CACFP is the supper program. SSO Seamless Summer Option. In California, we have universal meals for all students. So they show up if they're school age and they're enrolled, we feed them. There are more states throughout the nation are coming on after following our model. We are really still leading the, the country in that, but there's our few others. And it has made a big difference. A lot of students are now getting more, more food. We do it through two different programs, Community Eligibility Provision, which are six of the sites. And one of the sites is a provision two site. It's just semantics and different ways that uh, we have to apply with the state. CEP did change this year and fires requirements are different. So I'll be meeting with Alejandro in April to see if our last site, Marengo, should be put onto CEP. Basically, the funding is still the same. We're getting full reimbursement between the state and federal for all of our students. It's just kind of the way we have to ask parents to fill out applications or if we can do local control funding formula. Household data income, income collection forms. So really that's kind of the difference is what, what direction we want to take with that for next year. We'll go to CEP for all the sites or stay with provision two. You can see these are numbers from this school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, August through December compared to twenty-two, twenty-three for breakfast and lunch and ca and after school. We went up on all of our, other numbers. The seamless summer, we went down, but that was just because the summer before last, we had different programming, more students at more sites. And this year we went to jail. And so it just kind of changed how many students were at school to eat. I really think part of the addition with our numbers increasing this year is because of how we're serving some of the different items, the different choices that we're offering. A little more freedom within the menu that we've kind of worked as a team to, to build. So I think the students coming in in the morning are seeing different items. And then in the afternoon, they're getting more, a few more choices. So we made some innovations for our program. One of the things, uh, next slide, why? Thank you. Is we increased four staff. We added some five hour people at Greer, which focuses on Greer and Ferris site. They service both sites, River Oaks, Marengo and Lake Canyon. Uh, and with the addition there, there, we've gone back from staffing of three to four, which allows for more scratch items, the addition back of sometimes salad bars, less use of tray, paper trays, one-time use trays. So when somebody's out sick and we're down to just three people, instead of just going down to two, we're still able to maybe change the menu just slightly or not even change the menu and still function. Uh, and have somebody work an extra hour. It just allows for more time for the staff to spend cooking the scratch items, preparing. One of the things that we've done, like I said, is the menu options are more specific to each site's likes and dislikes. So we have a menu. We're on Mondays. It's like chicken. It's winter, winter, it's chicken, Galt Chicken Day. So there's like four options and each site, um, they don't serve all four of those, those days, but like the side, this side over here, they, they really are into the chicken nuggets and that sites over there, they're really into the Asian chickens, you know, the orange chicken. So this side over here doesn't like the orange chicken. So we don't put that on that menu as often. But this one over here might have it twice a month. So that's one of the things that we've taken the, I've given to the leads the ability to plan their menu within constraints of four items a day on during the week and they can kind of tailor it. And it really is, there are sites that love the macaroni cheese and sites that they're like, okay, we'll only put it on once a month or once every two months. So I think that's one of the things. The, let's see, oh, also when the students come up, a lot of times there, we're having sandwiches where if they don't want the macaroni cheese or whatever it is, they have a, a nice deli sandwich they can choose from. And breakfast, uh, all the pastry items, we've increased having a cheese stick with it, which helps with the protein and just increases it. Uh, it's not, we don't have to, but that's my thing, you know, I always want a little bit of protein. And we did that a few years ago, a little differently with eggs and things like that. And that didn't go over as well, but the cheese sticks, the the, they'll, they'll rip up, open a cheese stick anytime. So over the six, seven years that I've been here, I've really learned to lean into my promoted special meal. One of the old time favorites that we have every, every Halloween now is our ogre meal. It's, uh, oops, that's, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. That's not ogre meal. That is for National School Lunch Week, which was leveled up. A meal which we leaned into the Mario Kart, the stars, the moon pie, the princess tote, still tater tots. And we market those out. And those are big days that the kids start to talk about and they come and look for it. And, you know, those chicken nuggets are the same ones that we do for the hearts, the bats, the sharks, different things. And it just gets excitement and the kids like it and the students like it and they come in big time on that day. We did, we've done some heritage recipes, which are the wacky cake, which is actually a recipe that they did long time ago. And I pulled from some of the lunch ladies that were already here and they gave me their original recipes and I, you know, kind of reformulated and that cake is like super chocolatey and it's wacky because they have different crazy ingredients in it, but the students love it and they get it, you know, once every few months on a special day, but they love it. Another promotion that we've done on the next slide is sweet baby raised barbecued grilled bacon cheese bagel. It's a mouthful. And that's how I marketed it. We had a little different challenges. Some of the sites ended up with some bagels that were tiny. But we just leaned into that and said, well, we want to focus on the, the grilled patty. Uh, that was mixed with some some sites really liked it. Some sites were like, oh, that's crazy. So that's one of the things we did. This year, I like to look at things that are out there, you know? And that, when I saw that, they came through that, those are one of my favorite cookies that always remind me of my father is those those little cookies that you get at Walmart or whatever, but they've been redone. They meet whole grain requirements. And I was like, I have to get those on the menu. So we did that for Thanksgiving, a little thank you from the lunch ladies for the students. And that was a big, big day for that, for us. And a fun way to end, you know, and go on break. Uh, like I said, okay, here's our old standard favorite, the ogre meal. So those are, are bat nuggets and no, they're not made with bat, bats, but they are bat shaped, but the kids love them. And we did a, threw in a new uh, monster mash. And those mashed potatoes are made with steamed carrots. And some of the sites pureed the carrots and made them pure orange, others left chunks. And it was amazing to see the reaction. Some of them li- loved them, some didn't like the chunks, some liked it. One of the sites, she hand peeled potatoes and they were just not that excited about them, but you know, the other sites loved their ma- monster mash. So that's one of the standards that we do every year. For National School Lunch Week, one of the things we thought about, we did a vote for your favorite sandwich, which was National Sandwich Day. And so during National School Lunch Week, we had voting out there. We voted for either a hot dog, a hot dog, a grilled cheese or a chicken sandwich. And I threw the hot dog in because my daughter at camp this year, their big debate was, is a hot dog a sandwich? So I threw it out there and it got all the students talking about, is a hot dog a sandwich? And across all, all, I love you, Mr. Nelson, across all the sites, I don't know if it was the lunch lady's influence or whatever, but chicken sandwich was the winner. So we served on National Sandwich Day, chicken sandwiches. And we'll do that again this year because that was really a big a big marketing tool and a fun day. One of the interesting things on the next slide that came up was that there was the great half pint milk, white milk. One of the interesting things on the next slide that came up was that there was the great half pint milk, white milk. Unflavored shortage, carton, cart- carton shortage, so. When I heard about it, it was coming through all the directors and talking and I thought it was not, I thought it was a joke. Um, so apparently, in the U S, we have only two, maybe three. Companies that actually manufacture the half pint milk cartons for the whole country, and so one of them. Was changing over their equipment and there's an issue on changeover and so. We had some not white milk. Labels or cartons that didn't get printed, um, we were only impacted. Less than ten times at our sites, but we were able to put in a waiver, this um. C D E worked with us, the USDA, um, we were able to. Not serve both flavors or serve unflavored or serve only chocolate, or if we didn't have any milk at all, we could serve juice. Uh, or water, but really we had, we had our shelf stable that we already rely on for. Issues when we have refrigerators break down or no deliveries, we already have our shelf stable and we use those during the month, so we leaned into that and. Uh, there was no sites that didn't have um any milk, but we may have had some where it was. Not all the choices, but that didn't turn out to be too bad, and basically I think it's over. Uh, we haven't heard anything more about that now. Then we have. Our water bottle washing Wednesday. So a lot of, some of my inspiration comes from home and I have a fourteen-year-old daughter that. Has a hundred water bottles and my wife and I manage her and. We always are looking at having her throw her water bottle. In the dishwasher or washing it because they they get horrible, and so I thought, you know, if I'm doing that for my students at home or my child at home. I bet you across the board, nobody's doing that at a lot, you know, through the school district, so. I created this flyer, put it out there, um, we had so many comments. Uh, about, oh, I never thought about it, I had one of the district office people that said, you know, the teacher has their students. Leave their water bottles on their desk all week. And that she talked to her and said, okay, now we gotta make sure that the at least those are going home or getting washed. So that was just one of our kind of like community service things, so if you have a water bottle. Reusable one, and it's got stickers on it, that was the big thing. Hand wash it, hot soapy water, get a brush down in there, green scrubby, throw the lid in the dishwasher. And then or and change out it, change it out and. Everybody's happy, it gets rid of some of the gar- the slimy stuff. Another thing that we do is we partner with the Sacramento Food Bank and we have a pantry partner. We call it this year, it's been grub grab in the past, uh, today we hand it out at River Oaks, it's just boxes of shelf-stable grocery items that. We can give out to anybody in the community, um, I typically am out there at the end of the school day, so when the parents are up picking up their students, they can. Just tell me how many households they're picking up for, how many students live in or how many people live in the house, and they have a bu- couple boxes of shelf-stable items. Um, and we rotate through Valley Oaks, River Oaks and Virginia, we only have the capacity to get two hundred boxes a month from the food bank, so um. That's kind of why it's limited to just a few, a few sites, and we typically go through. The whole hundred boxes at each site when we do handout. Uh, the next slide is what the boxes are going to change to, so they're always similar to that. But this is for February and April, what the schedule boxes, so it has the shelf-stable milk, peanut butter, tuna. Spaghetti, rice, um, a bag of hearty chili. Lots of good staple things that you can put together and make a couple meals out of and make your pantry stretch. That's just something that we started back during COVID and it's just continued to be. Um, something that we'll we'll continue to do, as long as we're able to partner with the. The Sacramento Food Bank. Uh, on the next slide, one of the things we were able to do with kit funding and some of the additional fundings that we've gotten through. The last few years from the states is we're able to upgrade our van, that we have had a van that we use. Um, and recently, especially this last summer, we've had a lot of issues with it, we're keeping it. Uh, our backup van and we'll use it during their summer program, but we were able to purchase. Uh, a brand new Ford Transit van and uh we really decked it out with some. Nice items, running boards, so that the team can get in there without uh. Uh, hurting their knees, uh, lighting, uh cages, shelving. And it's dependable and it's just, we're waiting for the sticker, but it's just a great new addition to our program and. It's used for multiple things from running food back and forth, the fair sight. Uh, and Greer to picking up our towels and aprons that we that we are doing around at our sites. Um, so that's one of the big things, and it's a really nice addition to our our equipment and our team. And that's Chris Palmer, she's she's the lead at Greer and she's goes back and forth from Greer to Fair Sight. With my child nutrition professionals, one of the things that we've leaned into is really working on for this year. On the next slide, it talks about trainings, so we took a team of seven of us to. Uh, the California School Nutrition Association Conference in Palm Springs, we had a lot of educational classes, a lot of fun, learned a lot of things. Um, it was really great, that was a great opportunity, uh, it was a good to have a full team, those were. Almost all of them were leads and my uh and the district clerk and then assistant too. Uh, we have an additional training coming up possibly, there's one this summer, the same thing, but on the national level in Boston, I'm not sure if we'll do that. Um, and then we have the Chef Ann Project, we want to work with Chef Ann and getting more, getting chefs to come in and help to train our team. Um, and then I'm working with the high school district, Mina, she reached out to me and we're talking about uh partner partnering and. Doing a training at the Culinary Institute of America, you know, over in Napa, I meet with Alejandro to talk about that tomorrow. And so maybe possibly sending a team to get some training with them and um. Those are some of the things, because investing in in the team is really uh important to the program and it's foundational and it's. It it gets them excited, makes them feel valued, which they are valuable. Uh, things that we're looking forward to and and coming up in the, on the next slide. We're changing over from Meals Plus to Link Nutrition, Meals Plus is going away, it's not being. Um, supported anymore and Link and Titan have combined and and. Meals Plus, and so now we've got Link, it's got a lot of different opportunities when we're doing our applications and things that we can put them into our. Link our system and it'll actually speak to synergy and give our local control funding straight into synergy. Where right now, we have to actually manually enter that and then we have to all go back and forth, double checks all the time. Uh, and it's, it has some great things, um. Menu, digital menuing, so like right now at Valley, we have a digital board, but once we get the digital menus, when when uh. You hover your mouse over it, it'll tell you the nutritionals, it comes up in real time, so. On the menu, it may say that it's a banana, but over at River Oaks, the bananas are already bad and so. Or they were already sold out, so they have to make a switch to orange. As soon as she makes that switch on the menu, parents can see and they can get the nutritionals and health clerks and see how many carbs are done. So that's exciting, that should all be implemented implemented by April. Uh, summer meals coming up, I've already started reaching out to. O G and everybody and saying, where are we serving, so right now we're planning on having Gel Academy at least at all the sites and. Uh, probably a food service person at each site for the summer, um. For a few hours, this last year we did a couple of sites and satellite out, and so we want to kind of. Maybe focus one person at least at each site and and have a hot meal at during the summer too, but we'll have to talk about that too. And we'll also service the aquatic center and sore and possibly Thornton and do all, uh, plus all of our sites. Our vision for the program at all of the elementary sites, uh, we're to have, we're looking out to have. More scheduled regular taste testing and menu inputting by the sites, by the students at each site. Uh, we're looking to expand our scratch cooking and fresh options for fruit and vegetables, maybe. You know, we're getting into back doing salad bars, but also offering salad cups and just not just one standard, we're kind of like changing up and the kids like. The students like to see um differences, there are creatures that have it, but at the same time, they like to see, oh, it's different today, this Monday's this, Tuesday's that. So we're working on that, um, um, to increase the knowledge of the team. They, they are the frontline, give them frontline training, uh, they're the ones that. Hawk up the meals, so like when we have these, they'll say, hey, we're gonna have this next week, we're gonna have carrots, we're gonna have watermelon radishes. And get them, you know, educated on those choices, plus they're they're helping me with designing the menus. Um, and we need to increase our nutrition education program. Uh, that's something that we really need to reach out and connect with each site and increase that. At McCaffrey, we're looking at re-envisioning and enl- enlivening the program from bottom to top. Uh, really working with that team to uh mentor them, give them additional training, uh, really. Go in and looking at the environment, they're really revamping it. Um, and to create a partnership with that team and the students so that they're all proud and that they're, you know. Not like, oh, it's nothing any good, but they go, at 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 our school, we do this, that school, our school that. So, that's that's our vision for the for the program. Uh, Zen, we have any questions or hopefully I didn't go too long.
No, I loved hearing um all the fun that you guys put into. The meals and I know I have some picky eaters. And my daughter loves actually trying the food because she knows, she takes her little lunch, but she knows. She can try the school and it's really gotten her to try new things, and so I think that's awesome that. We offer food to all students and as a parent, you know that your child can get breakfast and lunch if needed, you know, at school.
And I think our waste has gone down, I forgot to throw that in there, but I think our waste has gone down with the choices and um. You know, to offer versus serve, so we are serving a reimbursable meal, but we have. Out their items, or if they really don't want the carrot, they don't have to take it, or if they're coming in and they don't want the macaroni and cheese, they can get the sandwich, or if they don't. Or they're really excited about that it's a chicken sandwich again, and so they eat it, you know, and then one of the things we've learned about the waste too is. Our special meals, we try not to do too many special items because they're going to eat the cookie first, they're gonna eat the the the. The ice cream first or whatever it is, so we try not to partner, put too many good things on one meal. Because they're gonna pick those certain things and eat all of them and then be full and and but have taken like everything, so. We really are intentional at looking at how we're packaging and pairing food items and um. Trying to minimize additional packaging, uh wrappers and forks and spoons and just our footprint. Within the old Cal Waste System and in the environment, so.
So I'm still trying to wrap my head around who doesn't like macaroni and cheese. But um, my question was with regards to the waste, so I I appreciate you providing that and explaining some of the strategies um that you, so thank you for that.
And it's funny because macaroni and cheese, when I came in, it was a solid favorite, and now it's we've. We have the standard recipes, we have different recipes, and there's sites that are. Aren't poor with it and other sites that they're, they want just the craft macaroni cheese, we don't do that, but. That's what they want, they don't want the, they don't want the Costco style macaroni cheese creamy, and that's what we kind of do. They want the craft, and so that's really those sites that are looking for that, kind of stay away from that that type. So that's that's helped reduce weight, but, all right, thank you, didn't mean to take up too much.
I just want to say, um, you, I've noticed over the months, you've done incredible work. You dedicate to make sure we provide, attract, make the marketing on it, you you're very detailed and we appreciate that because. Students want to eat our food because of the time you spent on trying to promote that, so thank you, Nick. We, I've seen the increase, so we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Now we have the Galt Horse and Assisted Learning and Enrichment Program Gallup.
Right, thank you, so I wanted to give you an update on the Gallup program, the program has really been on hold since the pandemic. And we are looking at restarting the program and we can do this now because of some new and and veteran volunteers. And some partnerships and funding, so we are looking at restarting the program with the expanded learning students, the after-school program. And so since we are starting with that, we can use some expanded learning, the ELOP funds, and so. Um, we do have a little bit of donation money left in the Gallup account account, but really it's because of these ELOP funds that we're able to restart. Because we needed to pay, since it was on hold, we had to renew our insurance, we had to renew the PATH membership, which is. The therapeutic para, who, what does it stand for, I forget what PATH stands for, therapeutic coursing. Along those lines, but we have to have that membership as well, um, we need a certi- uh certified trainer, which we do, we have a trainer. Um, we're in the process of securing volunteers and horses, and we're also in the process of. We have two retirees, Superintendent um Karen Shower and Donna Whitlock, Director of Educational Services, that are going to step up as volunteers and. They're actually starting the process of becoming a certified trainer as well, so that will be great until they're trained. We we have secured one, we have to update equipment, some helmets have uh expired, they do expire, and so we need to update that. We're completing repairs needed at the arena and our maintenance team is doing that. And then we're planning for some spring training for the volunteers, and then we're hoping that we will be ready for student riders by this summer. So we're hoping at the latest, we might be able to start sooner, just depends on the volunteers, might be able to, uh, our goal is to start with the summer program. Um, get kids back out there, and so in your packet, we have an updated flyer, it is in progress, we. We know we're gonna add a few more changes, but it was time to redo our flyer, and so we're also, um. We have staff that are updating our website, under programs, we want to have a page that's dedicated to Gallup, and so we'll. Finish updating our flyer and hopefully have that website up by the end of the month. Any questions on that? No? Yeah. Yes, reminded myself of something that I need to follow up on related to Gallup, sorry, I need to write that down, so I don't forget, okay.
You know, we have the Marengo Ranch Elementary Running Track.
Yes, so I wanted to update the board on um a a running track that is going in in the field at Marengo Ranch. And this is due to the longstanding partnership with the district and S and B James Construction. They have been partners with us for multiple projects in our district, um, the president, um. Of the company is a community, community member in Galt and his children attend our schools and they've attended Marengo Ranch, and so. Um, with that, S and B James is donating the project one hundred percent cost. The district is not paying anything for this track, um, it will be, there's a a picture, a diagram for you in your packet, it will be. One eighth of a mile, it will have a long jump in the middle. And they are trying to start, weather permitting, if you you go out there at the field, you can see there's certain things that are staked off and kind of fenced off. Um, from the time they can actually really start, they think it will take about two months to finish. Um, they're coordinating with the staff there, Principal Porter and Mr. Jumper, the P E teacher. And so it is estimated to be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a project, and so that's between. Um, S and B James and then some of their partners as well, and I'll highlight their partners in the donation on the consent calendar. But we thank them very much, they do great work for us and it's just very exciting that they were willing to choose us to give, to give back.
That is amazing. Long jump, I'm sure will be exciting for the students.
Yeah.
Now we have other reports.
Yes, um, the Williams Uniform Complaint Process, quarter two, there are no complaints to report.
And then the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school registration.
Yes, so just a a brief update, it's right around the corner, our registration for next school year opens up on Tuesday, January twenty-second. Our parents can enroll online or they can pick up a hard copy packet in any of our schools or our district office. Um, the transitional kindergarten, remember it shifts by two months each year, and so now. Um, the timeline to enroll in transitional kindergarten that will be at Fair Sight. It requires a child to be five years of age between September second, two thousand twenty-four and June second, twenty twenty-five. Right now it's April, um, second, so. Few, we should have, hopefully with this extended time, hopefully we'll have a few more registrations for TK. We currently have a little under a hundred students in TK, so we'll see if that increases. We currently have a little under 100 students in TK. So we'll see if that increases texture. Update for that.
School calendars.
We do. We have our school calendars. Let's see, we will start with Fair Sight Elementary. I don't, is Laura Marquez online with us tonight? Okay, no, she's not. So I will highlight, um, let me see, it's getting that time of night where I need my glasses, guys. Um, I'm going to highlight Family Night on Thursday, February 1st.
And then Greer?
Principal Simonic. Thank you. Lake Canyon, Ms. Papino.
So for Lake Canyon, um, on February 2nd, we have a family dance done by our um, parent club on campus. That's also um, the first of two girls' basketball games that we have that much, that month.
Great. Thank you. Um, Mr. Castillo, McCaffrey.
Well, one, one of the things I do want to highlight, and it's just a quick update, is we're not going to Fresno. We're going to UC Merced on the 9th. That'd be the avid field trip. It's a good opportunity for students to start thinking about their future and make a decision where they're probably gonna go as we have the kids earlier this, uh, this evening.
And Marengo Ranch, Ms. Papino.
Uh, Marengo Ranch, um, not in February, but the last Saturday in January is our annual PTKC Pancake Breakfast. And that's always a big hit and a great fundraiser. And then we also have um, Student Teacher Swap Day on February 7th, where um, they will kind of trade places for the day and that's always fun as well. And then our um, Discoverer Morning Sing at the end of the month.
Thank you. River Oaks, Mrs. Homsdus.
Okay, so in February, we have our Father Daughter Dance, uh, hosted by our PTA along with our Student Council. Uh, for our whole week is promoting, running, managing the sales of, of friendship grams for Valentine's Week. So they're very excited about that.
And Valley Oaks, Mr. Nelson.
All right. Thank you. Um, because I truly believe in our uh, intramural program at the elementary level, I want to highlight on the 2nd, the 5th and the 16th, we have 5th and 6th grade girls' intramural basketball going on. Uh, for, for many, if not most of our, our students at Valley Oaks, it is uh, their only opportunity. Um, for a number of reasons to participate in team sports. And I believe there's a, a, a very high value in, in participating in team sports. So we've got those three things. And then on the 22nd, Family Bingo and Lotteria Night uh, from 6 to 7, always a, a fun activity for our, our Valley Oaks families.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item H, Routine Matters and New Business, and it's 232.457, the Consent Calendar.
The one thing I would like to highlight would be donations. And so you have in your packet, um, this is for the Marengo Ranch Track. The partners that are donating their time and equipment um, and labor, SMB James Construction, Derubi Castellano's Architects, Centerpoint Engineering, McGwire and Hester, Reliable On-Site Services, and Eurata and Sons Concrete LLC. They're all donating services, time and equipment to make this track go at no cost to the district.
Thank you to them. I can't wait to see that completed. Now, Agenda Item 232.459, Board Action Regarding Student Expulsion.
I'm sorry, Ms. Skinner, we need a, we need action on the consent.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Calendar 232.457?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, S.
All second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number 232457, the Consent Calendar, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Annette Coonsey.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And now we have item 232.459, Board Action Regarding Student Expulsion, Case Number 22, or 22, 23 dash 04. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve 232.459.
All second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number 232459, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Annette Coonsey.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item 232.460, Board Consideration of Approval of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District 2223 District Audit Report by Christie White Associates.
Yeah. So we have our auditors on Zoom. Um, so EdCode requires us to provide um, uh, an independent annual financial audit to be in compliance. And we have Kyle, our CPA, that performed our audit online.
Good evening, everyone. Um, it doesn't look I'm, like I'm able to turn my video on because the host has stopped it is the message that I'm getting, but I'll go ahead and discuss regardless. Um, so I'm here to present the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. Um, I'm assuming you've all been provided with a copy of the audit and had a chance to take it, uh, uh, a look at it. You know, it is a pretty lengthy report coming in this year at about 93 pages in the PDF file. Um, so I, I won't bore you with all the details of the financials. Um, there's a lot of valuable information in there. I, I do encourage you to take a look at it when you have a chance, uh, read through. Feel free to let me know if you have any questions. Uh, but tonight we'll just be focusing on the results of the audit itself. And those are going to be summarized on page 81 of the audit report. Um, the title of that page is Summary of Auditor's Results. I see you all flipping, so I'm gonna assume that you're turning to that page right now. All right. So we'll just go through the summary of auditor's results real quick. As you can see on that page, it's divided into three sections. Beginning with the financial statements. Our opinion on the financial statements was unmodified. Um, that is the most favorable opinion that can be provided uh, at the end of an audit. Um, and essentially what that means is that the district, we found that the district's financial statements uh, were materially stated and didn't come across any sort of uh, major material weaknesses or huge misstatements, things like that. That, that we felt would uh, misrepresent the financial position of the district. So that's the good news there on the financial statements. Um, no findings or question costs on the financial statements. Moving on to that second section is related to federal awards. Um, so this is the first of two compliance opinions that we issue in the report. Um, with federal awards, we have to go through and take a look at the major sources of federal funding that the district receives. And sort of go through some selection criteria to figure out which federal programs we're gonna audit each year. This year it was the Special Education Cluster and the Education Stabilization Funds. And again, the good news there is that it was an unmodified opinion with no findings or question costs related to federal awards. The third and final opinion disclosed on this page is on state awards. Um, and the state compliance opinion was unmodified as well. Um, so all three opinions were unmodified. Um, and then again, the good news here with state awards is no findings or question costs were reported. Um, with state awards, there's a variety of procedures that the State Audit Guide requires us to go through each year, things like attendance, uh, instructional time, kindergarten continuance, teacher certifications, unduplicated pupil counts, LCAP, all sorts of other plans and state categorical funding um, that the state requires us to take a look at. So in going through all of those items that were included in this year's audit guide, um, we didn't note any sort of significant um, instances of non-compliance or question costs that needed to be reported. So, you know, really nothing but uh, good news to deliver to you tonight. And um, no findings to follow up on from the prior year. So pretty short and sweet.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yes, thank you. Um, any questions or comments?
Not, can I get a motion to approve 232.460?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Annette.
All second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to approve item 232460, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item 232.461, Board Consideration of Approval of the 2324 School Accountability Report Card for each of our school sites.
Right. Thank you. So this um, state law requires that schools receiving state funding to prepare and distribute a SARC annually. The um, school report cards must be published by February 1st. So while we are in the 2023 to 2024 school year, the SARC reports are on data from last school year and then to, two and three years subsequent prior to that. So that's kind of what you're uh, comparing your data to. The purpose of these report cards is to provide parents and the community with important information about each school as they relate to the LCFF priority areas. It can be an effective way for school to report on the progress in achieving goals. And the public may use the SARC to evaluate and compare schools on a variety of indicators. You do have a copy of all the SARCs in your board packet. They measure the conditions of learning, and this is a state priority that assesses basic services. Looks at teachers that are assigned, whether they're fully credentialed. Do students have access to standards-aligned instructional material? And how are the school facilities maintained? The second priority area is state standards. So this looks at implementation of academic content and performance standards for all students, including English learners. Uh, state priority area, course access. This looks at programs and services that develop to provide English learners, students with special needs, foster youth, and individuals with exceptional needs. The second area is student outcomes, and this looks at student achievement. And looking at assessments that are career and college-ready, uh, English learners and reclassification. And um, student outcomes in, for our particular district, we look at PE performance. The SARC also looks at engagement, and this uh, areas are around family engagement. And um, participation for families in the educational process of their students, including students with disabilities. Also looks at pupil engagement. And here we look at, again, at attendance, chronic absenteeism, uh, middle school dropout, high school dropout rate. And also uh, school climate, which looks at suspensions and expulsions. Okay, so that's kind of what this report card reports out on.
Sure, if you would like the principals to? Yeah. Well, it depends if they want to highlight something that, that stood out. Um, a lot of this is populated at the state level. A lot of it's data that you've, you've seen before. Um, a couple of the areas that principals do personalize are um, how they engage their parents.
Vision statement.
Vision statement, those types of things. You can tell by reading the SARCs which areas are personalized that principals do get to make changes. But the majority of it really is state data-driven, comes from Calpads, comes straight from CDE. But yes, you can definitely ask our principals to highlight something in the areas that they do have the ability to edit.
I'll go first. On, on ours, which gosh, I don't know what page it is. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at my own version, but uh, on, on the Valley Oaks, um, one in the, in the packet. Um, in the section for engagement, uh, for parental involvement. Um, I just wanted to just highlight the, I'm not gonna read it. We all know how to read, but what it, it says in that first paragraph uh, highlights all of the different activities that we do at Valley Oaks to engage parents and families. And we try to do uh, at a minimum, one event a month uh, where we can have families come out um, and participate in whether it's a science night or a math night or an art show, uh, something to get families on campus. Um, help uh, maintain and build those relationships with uh, with students, with families, with staff. Um, so we have a, a bunch of those that are listed there. There may even be some that, you know, I neglected to put in there. Uh, but we, it, it is something that we try to do um, very regularly uh, to maintain that, that relationship with our, with our families and our community.
Thank you. Want to just go down the, go down the, okay, Mrs. Homsdus?
Piggybacking on the parent involvement, I would just want to see, it was, it was really great to see the growth of, or I should say the opposite, the declinement of our chronic absenteeism rate. Um, coming back from COVID and coming to River Oaks as a new principal, it was, it was positive to see our population, our families, our students coming to school from 21, 22 to 22, 23. And um, now 23, 24. But it's nice to see that that projection, we're getting our kids back. And I think due to some of the involvement of parents, um, as I put in my report as well, um, I want to echo what Mr. Nelson said. Uh, these opportunities to have for families to come on campus or get involved, um, feel connected again is helping get their kids dialed back into school. And so it's nice to see that that, that rate is declining.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Simonic? Mr. Castillo?
So one of, one of the things I do want to highlight is the professional development for our teachers and our staff. Um, one of the things that we do look at courses are map assessments and to really predict what the S-PAC scores are gonna be. It is important that we only have the two, the students for two years. So sometimes those students do come in with a gap. So it's really developing a school-wide process. And one of the things that we have focused on is the reading routine to make sure that's implemented across curricular um, to other classrooms. Um, and also using those map assessments to provide more targeted services and identify students that we can possibly move to the next level. And really emphasizing how important these assessments are. Some students think, uh, whatever, I'll mark anything. But they don't understand the implications it has when they go to the high school level, but these scores really based on where they're gonna be placed at the high school level. So really emphasizing that and providing more professional development for our teachers to be able to implement new strategies and instructional in within their courses.
Thank you. And Mrs. Papino has Lake and Marengo.
For both the sites, it's um, been really nice to see the level of re-engagement of parental involvement post-COVID. Um, you know, Lake, Lake Canyon's PTA disbanded during You know, Lake, Lake Canyon's PTA disbanded during COVID time. Merengue Ranch did not, but of course it was very different. So it's really neat that Lake Canyon has a parent group again and the engagement with the activities that they're providing and just an increase in our D-LAC parents, our, or E-LAC parents, rather, our school site council numbers have increased, and that's really nice, Lake Canyon, because that was really diminished in the first little bit post-COVID. And for for Lake, for Merengue, just really nice to see the number of families coming out to things like the pancake breakfast, family dance, trunk or treat. It's it's good to have parents back and engaged, and it's fun to see them engaging with their children.
Thank you. We have any other?
I got a question. Mine's about the facilities. When was the paperwork done that like it tells you about like what needs to be improved? And all that stuff?
That was just done in December, so annually every December. Yes, and so all of our sites, all the school sites made progress towards good. That's the goal, to be at ninety percent, good is ninety percent, so it's hard to get ninety percent. I think there's two school sites that are still fair, but they did make growth. Their percentage did grow. But we stop, we have McCaffrey and we have Fair Site, I believe that are in the fair, in the fair category, but they made growth.
Is there like somebody from the state that comes in and does the inspection?
Yes, we hire a private outside source that is certified to come in and and do the inspections.
So then I'm assuming that they now, our maintenance now have this list. Focusing on these.
Yes, definitely. Maintenance has it, principals, principals communicate with custodians, because a lot of it is, a lot of it are things that can, we need to fix in the classrooms that are even maybe sometimes teachers, things stored too high, things in cabinets that aren't supposed to be, air fresheners can't have those in classrooms, so you'll see things like that as well. So sometimes it's just the principal looking at their list, because they give you, we have breakdown by each location, each room, each bathroom. We probably have a ten-page report for every school, and so it's maintenance, custodians, principals, teachers, it's really everybody. Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you of a motion from Wesley Cagle to approve item number two three two four six one, seconded by Annette Kunsy, Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item two three two point four six two, board consideration of approval of the nineteen six architects proposal for professional architectural and engineering services for the Greer Elementary new relocatable classroom buildings.
Yes, so we have two very old portables at Greer. They are currently used for the expanded learning program. But back when we did some renovations at Greer, we did not touch these portables. We didn't paint them, we didn't repair the roofing. We did not put sinks in these portables because we knew they needed to be removed. And so they're safe, we can still use them, but they are not, if we have the funding, we want to try to replace them. And so we have the expanded learning funds that we can use, and there's an excess of funds in in that category right now still, and so we have the money to replace those portables. And so nineteen six is one of our approved architects. Their contract or their proposal is here. It outlines the cost. It is about eighty six thousand dollars for architectural services. And they have that broken down for the board, construction, DSA, that's the state approval, bidding and the construction administration, there's four areas. This is the very beginning steps. If the board approves to move forward with this, we would then contract with a modular company to build the portables. Right now, the the research we've done, the soonest we would be able to get portables would be late fall or early winter of twenty twenty five. So that would be the next steps. We would go ahead and and we would start to, we would bring the contracts to the board, and if this is approved, we would bring a contract to the board in February to get the modulators built. And then after that, we would go out to bid and we would secure a general contractor that would actually install the portables. And so the timeline in the proposal would have to be updated because it was a little more optimistic thinking we could get the portable sooner. But there are just some companies we've talked to said they couldn't even get us a portable until summer of twenty twenty five. So really, the project would not be completed until probably summer of twenty twenty five. So that, this is what we would like to do. And again, this would be all expanded learning funds. We do have it in the budget for the whole project to to purchase the portables for the general contracting services. Probably about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete everything. Start to finish.
Good that we have those funds.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve two three two point four?
I'll make the motion to approve two three two four six two.
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you of a motion from Annette Kunsy to approve item number two three two four six two, seconded by Casey Raboy, Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Wesley Cagle.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item two three two point four six three, board consideration of approval of the twenty four twenty five E-rate service providers.
So our school district issued a request for a proposal for an E-rate service provided for category one to least lit or dark fiber service and category two to purchase a network's electronics only with no installation. So it is recommended the board approve for category one proposal for AT&T to provide the least dark fiber service and for category two proposal for for Gigcom to provide the network of electronics.
I'll make the motion to approve two three two point four six three.
I'll second.
Thank you of a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two three two four six three, seconded by Catherine Harper, Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Annette Kunsy.
Aye.
Wesley Cagle.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Item two three two point four six four, this is a first reading of the board consideration of approval of the board policies and the administrative regulations listed below.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and start this. This is a team effort. All departments are noted for some updates. We'll just kind of, we we know which ones we will be reporting on. I have the first two, and again, this is just to give a brief summary of some changes, opportunity for board discussion. Any questions, clarifications that you would like brought to you at the next meeting in February, this would be an action item to approve. So LCAP will be first. There's a board policy update and an administrative regulation. Really, the changes here, long-term English learners are now considered a significant subgroup and will be identified in our LCAP. Those are students that have been an English learner for more than seven years. And also there is a new timeline, and part of that timeline was presented to you tonight. The timeline in the AR does state that now you have to have an LCAP update by February twenty eighth. And so with that, you'll see there is a new section for timelines for the LCAP. Those are the the major, major changes with that. And we'll move on to to Cleo.
If you take a look at the current policy, we have very old language. Some of us that have been in the field for a while, we probably remember the API, AYP, STAR test, so that's very old language. Yeah, the new policy that we currently have states that performance shall be evaluated every year on the multiple measures of the California Dashboard. We talked to you about that last month. The new policy also reflect, like Lois just mentioned, the addition of long-term English learners as a student group. And it also states that should we not, should we fail to meet specific criteria that that our district would be open to technical assistance from the county.
So, excuse me, so the the this policy interventions to underperforming schools is new. We do not have this policy at this time. And this is around making sure that districts are to provide technical assistance to schools to support continuous improvement of student subgroups that are performing lower than the other subgroups. And this would be looking at the student California Dashboard data and also reviewing district LCAP goals and priorities. It it identifies what technical assistance would look like. In addition, it identifies the County Office of Education recommending the district require their support. And if we were to receive County, Sacramento County Office of Support, it would be under the differentiated assistance program, which is a two-year consultation and collaboration. The next one's me as well, so I'll just go.
Yes.
Any questions? Sorry. Sorry, I just got a frog in my throat all of a sudden. So the the next policy, the Citizen Advisory Committee, these are updated regulations to reflect new law which exempts special education advisory committees from the Brown Act requirements. However, it does require them to follow what they call mini-Brown Act requirements, and this is procedural meeting requirements. It identifies what committees are still under the Brown Act and then which committees are not subject to the Brown Act, and that must still comply with procedural meeting requirements.
I think waivers.
Okay, waivers, all right. So this is a policy update. It recognizes that sometimes the governing board may need to request a waiver from the state around laws or regulations. All waivers must be approved by the board, and they must be provided all the information so that they can make an informed decision. There is needing to be a public hearing if a waiver is to be requested from the State Board of Education. And these notices need to be posted in newspaper or on the school, school site, school district's website in at least three public places. The pub, the policy is also being updated to reflect that you cannot request a waiver for TK or K programs.
Okay, my turn. So number seven, I have policy thirty four hundred, management of district assets and accounts. It looks like it's just some updates. We already follow California Department of Education and their their governmental accounting standards. That's what we're trying to do already and what we trained our fiscal. And what they're updating is including that language as part of our board policy. So another update is in the bottom regarding that if it is our responsibility, if there's any investigations for suspected fraud that we coordinate with legal, and now it's including VicMac, which is the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistant Team. We, we, if we ever got to that point, I mean, we have, we know those resources that we do use. It looks like the update is just including more of those resources the state of California already uses for this. For number eight, it's VP thirty four hundred, management of assets. So this one, it just, it looks like they added an update, number eleven, from our current adopted to the draft is they have to fraud and misappropriation of funds. The one that there's some updates is overstating income expenses or misreporting time. So it's just letting us know more of guidelines. It's not something we do, but I'm assuming the state of California does it because they've seen it somewhere and they just want to make sure that we put it in our board policy. Other sections that they added is that we we investigations regarding a district investigation, how it is and the procedures. I I just wanted to say that we do, we follow these procedures. Now it's now in writing legalities and updating of it. Any questions?
All right, the next one's me. This is involuntary. Involuntary student transfer. So this is a new poly for, policy for us. The district, which, so the policy outlines, I'll give authority to the district to involuntarily transfer a student to another school within the district when specific requirements are met. However, the governing board has to adopt a policy at a regularly scheduled board meeting and include notices in the annual notifications to parents and guardians. This policy also identifies when we are looking to transfer a student, that the designated administrator review all programs available and that the decision is made in a non-discriminatory manner. The policy also clarifies requirements for an involuntary transfer of a student who has been convicted of a violent felony or misdemeanor associated with the possession of a firearm and also transfers to different types of programs within the district. The next board policies and regulations around bullying. In terms of the policy, this has been updated per new law that prohibits discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, a state that the policy applies to all acts of the governing board and superintendent. Though it was, it was based on guidance from the US Department of Education around discrimination, which is reflected in the CSBA Policy Brief, School Safety, Bullying and Cyberbullying. Also encourages district families to model respectful behavior to contribute to a safe and supportive learning environment. The regulations are new, we don't, we currently do not have any regulations in place. The regulations were updated to expand the definition of cyberbullying based on the previously mentioned policy. Additional measures to prevent bullying, strategic plan for school connectedness, school, social skills, implementation, and really building that school and social connectedness. There's language around digital and media literacy schools, skills. And also some language around if a student has been suspended for racist bullying, harassment, intimidation, and that there may be opportunity for the student and the victim to engage in some restorative justice. And also that there are services and supports for the victim of such the victim of the behavior. Also, the administrative regulations provides examples of prohibited conduct, measures to prevent bullying, staff development, information and resources, and student instruction, information how to file a complaint. So those are all outlined in the administrative regulations. Right? The next one is mine too. It's the administration of medication and monitoring health conditions. So these regulations have been updated to reflect new law. The districts may hire a licensed vocational nurse if an exhaustive search for credential school nurse was conducted and they were not able to fill that position. There's new law around providing emergency stock albuterol inhalers to school nurses or trained personnel in the event of a medical emergency or a, for a student suffering respiratory distress. New law around volunteering, volunteers or employees to administer opiate antagonists will not be liable for civil damages. And the last item was the abilities for school nurses in consultation in collaboration with a student's doctor to be able to administer anti-seizure medication for a student that is experiencing a seizure at school. I think it's me still, sorry. All right, so the preschool, early childhood administrative regulations and policy. These are updated. We do currently have these as part of our board policies, and the new laws are really around a student that is in TK or K can be still eligible for CSPP before or after school and district can offer enrollment, so they can be concurrently enrolled. And the administrative regulations were updated. Um, and the administrative regulations were updated to also, um, amend the enrollment priorities, because these were revised. And additionally, in the regulations, the suspension expulsion guidelines and definitions were expanded. And the last one is around transitional kindergarten. So we currently have this policy. Um, this was updated to reflect the new, uh, the, the timeframes in terms of eligibility for TK. Also identifying students that are TK eligible can still be, can and may be eligible for the California State Preschool Program. There is, uh, new, uh, they reference the staffing ratios continue to be one to twelve and are contingent on funding for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to be one to ten, so one adult to ten students based on the funding.
Okay, number sixteen, board policy sixty-one, forty-two point eight, comprehensive health education. This policy, uh, now reflects the importance of mental health, specifically if we were ever to offer a course at McCaffrey on health education, we would need to ensure that that class, that course included mental health. At this point, we don't have such a class at McCaffrey. The updated policy now includes the impact of social media on children and the importance of providing digital and media literacy. This also includes student wellness and physical activity. Number seventeen is the AR regulation that goes with this policy. Again, it kind of repeats itself, it has three components, the content of instruction, students excused from health instruction and involvement of health professionals. Basically, again, this regulation talks about how it is important that if we were ever to have a class at McCaffrey, it would have to include mental health education. Um, regulation, of course, still has the right to opt out from any part of the health education program that we may offer. And this regulation again mentions the nutrition and physical activity and how important it is for the well-being of children.
I just wanted to highlight, um, Cleo, a couple things that are, have a strikeout in the regulation, and those are a, a strikeout because we are not required to teach those and we currently do not have curriculum to teach those areas. And so we would, for the final, um, copy that would be published on our website, that would not be on there.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, sorry, that's me. So closed session, we have this bylaw currently, this is related to what is reported out or made public after closed session. Um, there are certain items that can become public upon written request. There's not a whole, there's not a whole lot changing here, but what we do want to add this time, we don't have the exhibits, and so we thought it helped clarify how to agendize, um, closed sessions. So you have exhibit, um, it's nineteen-nine-three-two-one, exhibit one, that has some examples of board meeting agenda descriptions for closed session items. That follows the, um, law of how we agendize and what can be discussed in closed session. And then also, we have exhibit two, nine-three-two-one-two, this would be, um, an example of reports of closed session actions and so how, um, you can request, or the, how you'd report out. So when we make a, when the board makes a decision or an action in closed session, how you would report that out. So we would include with this bylaw exhibits now. And then what we also added, um, we added policy one-three-two-five because this was updated in two thousand and seventeen, but we did not bring it to the board at that time. But we do, we wanted to bring it because we do get questions pretty often, and recently we've had a couple of questions on what the, the discretion the district has on distributing promotional materials, um, or advertisements that are not district-sponsored. So for example, um, sports organizations, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, those types of things, um, they are not, district is not responsible for those, but following policy, we can distribute. What is, at, what's changed here? Um, we would stay with option two, that it's limited public forum, we would not, I would not recommend option one saying absolutely no, that we're not going to distribute any materials, but we have some discretion on what we distribute. They did add, um, criteria for approval on the back page, number four, five and eight have been added, some more guidelines there on how we would, um, the, what we would use to determine if it would be appropriate for us to distribute, distribute at the district level. Something that we don't need to have board adoption for, but something related to this that I wanted to get the board's opinion on is, um, we currently don't have a formal process for distributing, um, flyers or advertisements, um, for other organizations. And we've been doing a little bit of research because we've had some questions on, um, you know, how you pick and choose, can it be electronic, should it be paper, those types of things, should it be translated, should we require an organization to translate it, um, prior to us sending it out? We have looked what other districts are doing, more and more districts are moving away to no paper, that it's all digital and that, it, of course, it would still have to be approved by the district and a lot of districts are requiring organizations to translate it if there is a population, um, that warrants that in the district. Ours, of course, would be Spanish, we do, um, send home everything in, in Spanish that we do in English, uh, uh, from our district office and our school sites as well. So I don't know if that's something the board would like to see, I could have it as a report item, if you would like a, a typed up process of how we would do this. Um, maybe we do, maybe it is time that we say we don't, we don't deal with the paper anymore. We don't make the copies for the organizations, but it is a lot of work for them to make the copies and bring it over and then we count it out and then the office staff at the, at the school sites have to distribute it and put it in boxes and, and things like that. And, you know, we could just use our, our synergy system and send it out electronically if it's approved. So that's one option. Um, and also, should we require that they translate it in Spanish?
Would it save our staff time and energy if it was electronic versus?
It would. It would.
The papers get shoved in the backpacks, so it kind of defeats the purpose sometimes too, if you're really trying to get information out.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, whatever, if it's Class Dojo or just the district website or?
Right.
Yeah, there's probably ways to go.
And if they, they want to utilize the district to distribute, then it should be translated.
So that's something we could add, I could, I could bring to you, um, as a report with this item, a sample of what our process would look like, so that when people call us, they call district office and they ask, we could actually give them something in writing, this is what we follow. Um, but we don't have to be this, um, descriptive in our board policy, but it would just be a, a district process that we use.
I've already heard great things of, about the one message that was just sent out like a, a week ago.
Mm-hmm.
So a lot of orga- people were already, already have received like two or three phone calls like right away and I was like, oh, what are you guys talking about? So then I looked at my email and I said, oh, okay. So like I said, a lot of positive, people were talking positive already.
Mm-hmm. I think, I think it would help, and we did get a call after we sent that out, just asking, you know, will you, will you do this for me too? I don't want to do the paper anymore, you know, th- those kinds of things. So it would save the organization, organizations' time and money as well. Um, be a few more emails coming to your inbox from synergy from the district, that's for sure, but, um, you know, I, I think some, the hardship for some might be getting it translated in Spanish. Um, but, but really, we, we probably should be because it's not equitable if we're, you know, we're not putting it in Spanish, we, we have a lot of Spanish-speaking families. And so if we want to get the communication out, it should be in both languages.
Can we include in the report, um, whether or not it's going to cost the organizations? Or maybe you already know the answer to that, is it going to cost them to submit their materials through synergy or is that, would that be free to them?
No, we, we wouldn't charge, no. Um, you know, they, of course, if it's paper, they have to pay for the paper and make the copies, we don't do that for them.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And hopefully, they would be able to, um, find somebody to, to translate, because we wouldn't provide district services to do that. Um, Google Translate is amazing now, they started there and then had somebody in the community or somebody in their organization that could proofread it and see if they need to make some edits. I see that maybe being, uh, maybe the biggest barrier that some organizations might say we don't have the resources to translate it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna say, maybe there's a way we could, you could charge a fee to translate it for them.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we could look at that. Like we, we do have fees to like use our facilities in some cases, so, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Was that it, was that the last one? Yes, okay.
When do we go back to public comments or topics not on the agenda, since we already did that?
Yes, if we had, we could have more, I don't know.
Do we have any new, um, public comments for, uh, topics not on the agenda?
No, we have no public comment requests, Ms. Skinner.
So then that brings us to pending agenda items. We had the acceleration blocks.
Mm-hmm.
And the school research box of reports.
Yep.
Any? In that case?
No, we will add, I know we had, um, a request to have the feminine products as a report item, so, um, we'll have that as a report only, um, discussion and we'll provide some documentation and, and things like that, we'll include that for February.
Okay. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.